Want to bring the meeting to order at 6:35 PM. Got a great crowd, thanks everybody. Why don't we start off with any public input? Anybody? Anybody? We have all these people. Okay, absent that, why don't we move on? We'll go to the student report, Ms. Patel.
So, to start off, we have some notable academic matters. Finals started last Friday and they're continuing into this week until Wednesday. Summer work for AP classes has been given out. And summer reading starts today, Monday, June 16th. And then for some notable fine arts matters, the new group has been chosen for notorious for the upcoming year. And then moving into athletic, there's a lot because the spring season just finished. So, boys baseball won the Division III State Championship. The score was 10-3 versus Arlington Catholic. Girls track won state championship also for Division V for the third year in a row. Boys track placed third at states. Boys lacrosse ended the season in the Round of 16. Girls lacrosse also ended in the Round of 16. Boys tennis season ended in the Round of 16. And then fall sports have been holding preseason meetings. Fall sports registration has opened. And then fall cheerleading tryouts have just completed. For some other matters, SLAM Student Leadership and Mentoring has a meeting with eighth graders on their Legacy Day this Wednesday as a sort of pre-summer orientation to answer any questions that they have before going into the summer. Student council members have helped with childcare at the town meeting on Monday, June 10th. And DECA has had their final fundraiser that started on Friday and ends on Wednesday. And they're selling snacks between finals as a refuel fundraiser. And the last school, the last day of school is on Friday where we have every class. And there's no school on Thursday for Juneteenth. And then for student work report. So, this is my final English project for this year. We read a novel called Kite Runner. And we were tasked with making, so I chose, there was a couple different project options. So, I chose making a poster, a digital poster. So, to kind of do a little bit of further research on the topic of kite running and see exactly how it works in Afghanistan, which is where the novel took place. So, we kind of did a little bit more research about where it happens, when it happens, who does it. And then also there's an annotated bibliography section, which is where I just found some credible sources to find the information. That is it.
Comments?
No, great book.
It is a great book.
I would just say, I mean, on the athletics, just a great season overall. I mean, baseball, amazing. Track, I mean, dominant dynasty. And so, just, you know, Mr. Johnson, I see you here. Amazing way to end your tenure as athletic director, so. Yeah, just congratulations to all the athletes this spring.
I guess I had to ask, are you going to take a break this summer with all of your activities? Or are we going to keep pressing on?
I hope so, I hope so.
Take some time off, enjoy the summer.
Yeah, definitely.
First off, I dare anybody to actually list off all of the state championships we've won in the last five years because that would be pretty impressive. What did you like about Kite Runner? Did you like it?
I did, yeah. I thought it was really interesting. There was a lot of things that happened. It was definitely a novel that keeps you on your toes. So, it was really interesting to kind of see like how the young boys kind of grew up and what happened to them as like time went on. And then we also watched the movie in class, which kind of was a good way to end learning about the book. And it was kind of a good way to ease into finals, so.
Oh, that's great. Makes me want to reread it, that's great. Fantastic, well, thanks. And are we going to be seeing you next year too?
Yes.
Awesome, that's great. Well, thank you very much. You're welcome to stay if you want, but you certainly don't have to.
Thank you.
Okay, why don't we move on? Because I know everybody wants to get to the school committee calendar. No, let's probably not do that.
Could I make a suggestion? We did have a student overnight trip request. If we do that, then our retirees and then our CPAC presentation.
That'd be perfect. Yeah, so why don't we move to the overnight trip requests?
You owe Dr. Daly for not making you wait.
You can just scroll down.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Hello, my name is Natalia Penusos. I'm the student council president at the high school. And this is Shania Verma and Sophia. Sophia's our vice president. And Shania is one of our historians. We're here requesting approval for two overnight trips. One of them is a national conference and one of them is a state conference. So, we thought, why not come a little early before the next school year to get these approved? Just because one of them is new. So, the first one that we're seeking approval for is the National Student Council Conference. It's February 27th through March 1st, 2026. February 27th is a Thursday and March 1st is a Sunday. And it's located in Washington DC. So, some information about the trip. We're planning on bringing only two to four students to one advisor just because of the cost and the location. It's a little bit far. What it is, is the National Student Council, National Honor Society Lead Conference. This is held annually. I believe they've had it in the past, like pre-COVID. Last year was the first year that they kind of kicked it off since then. And this year, they're making it a little bit bigger. It was held in, I want to say Chicago? Yeah, Chicago last year. And now it's going to be held in DC, which is going to be nice. Again, Thursday through Sunday, 27th through the 1st of March at the Washington Hilton Hotel in Washington DC. The cost, it is a pretty pricey trip. But student council is planning on covering it with fundraising. Of course, flights are pretty expensive nowadays. So, we're thinking about $350 per person, $220 per room. And we would get two rooms. And then registration is around $300 per person. Benefits of going to this conference. So, first, Shania was actually elected onto the National Student Council State Board as the National Vice President of Service. So, this year she'll be flying down during the school year on vacations to work with officials in Washington DC to bring service opportunities to students. There's some national renowned keynote speakers, including Lori Hernandez, I think, the Olympian. Of course, a lot of leadership workshops, some that Shania will be presenting. And the fact that we've also won some national awards this year. I was a national scholarship recipient. And Shania and Quinn Newton, we're national grant recipients. So, we thought that we should be there in support of our award winners. But, yeah, anything else you guys want to add?
Covers it all.
Any questions?
Yeah, that's great.
Have you, this is the new conference, right?
Yeah.
So, no, I've been to this one before.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
It's also our first time kind of having, I want to say even state representation on the national board, so I feel like it's kind of big.
Yeah, no, that's very exciting.
Yeah.
Congratulations, very impressive.
Yeah, that's it for our national one. I can move on to our student.
Yeah, yeah, please.
Okay, so, state conferences, a little typo. It's March 4th through 6th, so a Wednesday through Friday in Hyannis, Massachusetts. We've gone to this conference for many, many years. I'm sure you remember last year us coming and around January asking for approval. So, we bring about 16 student council members and two advisors. It's the MAS C State Conference, held annually. Again, March 4th through 6th, Wednesday through Friday. It's at the Emerald Resort and Conference Center at Hyannis, Massachusetts. And the cost is around $250 per person. We usually take as much money off as we can, again, from fundraising to make it a little bit more accessible for students to come. We go to the MAS C State Conference because, again, we nominate a lot of students for awards. We participate in the Special Olympics Massachusetts Polar Plunge. We also host leadership workshops. And I was elected onto the state board this year, so I will be hosting workshops there and presenting some awards. And in order to keep our status as a gold council and a national council, we have to attend the state conference. So, yeah, anything else? Any questions?
The only question I have, the only concern I have at all is that it looks like they're back-to-back.
Yeah.
So, you're going to miss Thursday, Friday, and then you're going to miss Wednesday through Friday the next week?
Yeah.
So, just want to, I mean, I know that the first one is only four students. So, I'm assuming you guys are pretty good students.
Yeah.
Be on top of that. But I'm not going to not vote for that, but just, you know, make sure you're getting your homework done in advance because you will be missing a bunch of school in a short period of time, so.
Yeah.
How many student council members are there altogether?
170-ish. 165, yeah, something like that. It's an open council, so a lot of members.
Okay, so how do you pick the 16 who can go? Is it different every year or?
Typically, we have them sign up depending on how many kids sign up. I know one year we had them write a little bit about why they wanted to come. Sometimes we do interviews, it just depends. But we try to pick the most active council members. So, who's been showing up to our fundraiser, stuff like that. But yeah, I don't know. How we're going to do it this year depends on the interest levels.
It kind of depends on how much interest we get.
Yeah.
Well, you guys are the ultimate arbiters of who goes. It's like the leadership of the group.
Yeah.
That's fine, excellent. Any other comments, questions? I suggest we make just a single motion for both trips. I think we can do it all at once. Can I hear a motion for the February and the March trips? Anybody?
Move to approve the overnight trip requests for the student council trip to Washington DC and the statewide conference in 2026.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Nay? Approved, 5-0.
Thank you so much.
Awesome. Have a good summer. Awesome, so why don't we go to new business, the retiring personnel recognition?
Great, so thank you so much, Mr. Friedman. We have with us tonight, we've invited members of our school community who are retiring. There's a few who are not able to be here tonight. What we have is just a moment to recognize their great years of service to the district. For everyone who's here, we do have a gift that the district has for the retirees. The administrators that are here, slightly different process. We have another time when we're giving the gifts to them. In advance, there's no gifts for administrators tonight. But we are doing that at the administrative level where we're doing a celebration with them. But we want to take time to thank them. So, I'm just going to share the names of the retirees. And then those who are here tonight, we're going to have you to come forward and we'll present you with, Mr. Kling's going to assist me. We have some gifts. I want to thank Morgan Sories, our human resources administrator, for procuring these and setting them up in Deco Orlando. And you other people in the central office today for helping to wrap them and get them ready for tonight. And I do have a request from the transcript to take some photos with the school committee of the retirees. Due to the large number, we might do two groups, like a secondary group and then an elementary group. Okay, so, Sean, are those in the order that are on here? So, I'll recognize somebody who I don't believe is here, Rich Brennan, who's a food service van driver, 17 and a half years. I don't see Rich, right? Next up is Ms. Lori Capazuto, middle school paraprofessional, special education. This is 16.8 years, does that sound about right? Well, for it, thank you so much. Next, we have Christine Davis, middle school teacher, 27 years, social studies. We have Ms. Catherine Francis, who's a science teacher at the high school, 21 years in North Reading. Ms. Kathy Govain, teacher grade three, 16 years of service in our district. I'll recognize Heidi Castle next, little school kindergarten teacher, currently 22 years of service in our district. Ms. Joyce Lorton from the Hood School, she's a special education teacher. 27 years in the district, combined 15 years as a teacher, 12 years as a parent. Ms. Leslie Mizonis, paraprofessional, special education, 17 years in the district. Ms. Barbara Papageorgio, paraprofessional, general, 25 and a half years. I don't believe Pat Patalano's here, food service lead, 19 years in the district. We see Colleen Reska not able to be here. She was a nurse in the district, nine and a half years. Ms. Debbie Reynolds, 17 years in the district, kindergarten teacher. I don't believe Sue Rin is here, food service lead, 22 years at the Hood School. Ms. Nancy Sexton, paraprofessional, general, 11 years in the district. Ms. Susan Welsh, I don't believe she's here, paraprofessional at the little school, 26 and a half years in the district. Our three administrators, just want to recognize Mr. Dave Johnson, physical education teacher, athletic director, 18 years in North Reading. Mr. AJ LaPret, principal at the high school, 15 years in North Reading. And AJ was also the assistant principal prior. Chris Molly, principal at the little school. She was a teacher prior, grades three, grade one, 21 years in our district. So, I should have tabbed that up because it's well over, I'd say, close to 300-plus years total of service in this room right now. Perhaps closer to five if you look at all these numbers. It's just incredible. This is a large graduating class, it feels like this year. Lots of people who've, you know, who I've worked very closely with over the years. Teachers in leadership positions, teachers in various roles that have contributed so much to student development and staff development. Big shoes to fill across the board here. The administrators who are leaving. You've done so much to help me grow as a leader over the years and to pass on your knowledge and wisdom to all the teachers and students. It's really incredible and it's starting to hit me now that this is actually happening. So, Sean, is there anyone else that we have there that's not represented? I wanted to take a moment though to, you know, school today, obviously, if you have anything to share.
Yeah, I just, really quick, I heard something, oh, I don't know, in the last couple days that the average longevity of a graduate right now is going to be less than two to three years at any given job. And it's wonderfully.
Those are my graduations.
Maybe that's where you heard it.
No, somewhere else. But to hear all those numbers, to hear everybody here for so many years, it just warms my heart to see the dedication, not just to the kids, but to the community as well. And so, it's with heartfelt appreciation for all of your service. And I've said this to my family many times. You are all first responders, just as much as anybody in the community. You run into a problem, away from it. And so, with that, I just, with all my heart, thank you for everything you've done. So, we really appreciate it.
I'll jump in next. I just wanted to say, well, first and foremost, thank you. This is sad, it's a sad moment. I mean, honestly, like, I mean, I remember my son started when he turned three years old because he had an IEP. And, I mean, the first people he met were, you know, Mrs. Molly and Mrs. Mizonis, always greeted everybody in the morning. I mean, Ms. Cap as well, like both had, my oldest has, you know, one-to-one aide. It's like the last people they see at the end of the day. I mean, Mr. LaPret, Mr. Johnson are on the schools, you know, from morning to night. And just so many teachers here, you know, current teachers, Davis, so many different people that have impacted our children's lives. I mean, everybody up here, school committees are a vast group of different people sometimes. We are all parents of kids that are in the schools right now. You know, the reason we do this, the reason we moved to this town, the reason we keep our kids here is because of you. I mean, the school is the teachers. And it's really sad. I mean, it's really sad to see so many people leaving at once. And, I don't know, but we're thankful that we had so many years with you all. And, I don't know, but you're going to all be very, very hard to replace. And so, just want to thank you all for all the time that you spent at the district and for the people that had my kids in particular, thank you all. And, I don't know, I mean, it's a sad day, but really, really grateful for all of you. So, thank you guys.
Yeah, so both of my kids had Mrs. Reynolds. And it was our entree into the North Reading school system. And we're really going to miss her. But just to echo what Scott said, it's amazing for you guys. It's a really big loss for us. And you guys are what makes North Reading great, what makes North Reading school system great. Keeping the schools great is why I wanted to run for school committee. And then just, you know, even over these past couple weeks, going to some of the athletic events and bringing my kids down and things like that. It's like, that's why you move to a small town like this, watching my nine-year-old cheer on the seniors and all that stuff. It's really, we've got a special group here, so thank you.
I'll tack on and not repeat what was already said. I mean, I want to thank you all for the culture that you've created here, right? Within about 30 seconds of entering the school district, we knew that we picked the schools with the right culture. And that's largely driven by the group that we see here with the 300 to 500 years of experience, depending on the math. We'll have to do the math after. But, I mean, the culture here is absolutely outstanding, right? And I'll give my shout out to Mrs. Reynolds, too. Made our transition into the elementary phase extraordinarily easy. My kids know where you live, so be careful with that. Exactly. But, you know, I think that it just says everything about this district. You know, looking around the room and seeing so many familiar faces. And even though my children haven't have you, you've had a presence in this district. And this school system is what it is because of you. So, thank you all.
I can't keep my mouth shut. So, I'm here because I'm the crier on the school committee. But, and I had, my kids haven't had any of the teachers mentioned or, you know, even the administrators really. But I think the reason why I tear up, aside from the fact that I'm a mush, is that this represents not just years, but that's days of the year, minutes, kids. You start doing the math and it's like incredible impact that all of you have had on kids. And, oh, I'm going to cry again, so I'm going to stop while I'm ahead. It's just so, it's so nice to see that the years of service and what that means and how many like generations of kids out of fags. And it's a lovely thing to see. So, it's sad, but it's bittersweet because, you know, now you get to go on to some new adventures.
We do a couple photos, yeah?
Mr. Simon, do you want to be the photographer?
You could help us with that, that would be wonderful.
Everybody want to come down for?
Do you think the request was, did we need to do two separate? Or do you think just based on the numbers? Try one, okay, great.
No, 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 no.
Scott's going to do a split of everybody else.
Scott can do that one time and then go to the ER, so.
You did.
Do you want us behind here or in front of it?
In the well, in front, yeah.
Oh, wow, I've heard calls that way.
Terminology.
The pet.
I can pretty much get people from the edge of the table.
I don't know, where are we going to get?
From the edge of each table.
Yeah.
I always think everybody looks good. All right, go. Beautiful.
You always bring a ton of.
Scary.
Yeah.
Want to give a second? I would say let him, I don't know. You're not. Want to give a second? Okay.
I'm going to give so much time, I'm going to watch me sleep. I have a couple days myself, so he's having his school. I'm going to go to number one, five, eight, ten.
Guys, we'll miss you.
I'm a crier, I'm going to do.
Yeah. Diapers, yeah.
I mean, like, I didn't use my journal. I mean, I think when I.
He's not doing it well because he doesn't complete everything. I'm just like, you gotta be organized.
No, and I know, again, I didn't.
He's a very good.
Yeah.
He's a good student.
All right, we have pretty lights coming. I mean, we can bang or slay shape.
Believe me.
I mean, last. I know, I know, I know. I don't, I don't want to. I know, I know that they brought up like a commitment. In the future, what if like, and I don't think they. Right? But.
Well, it was intentionally done, but you create. That was obvious, I know, I know. I would have done it. I think it's on the budget. It looks like the middle, yeah, nowhere.
Yeah, it's just like, I just don't want it to be a point that it's.
Well, personally, the other thing is. I think about the. So, there's a question that's like, I don't know that it's a question that's 50 and 50 an hour and actually 10:30 on the place. It's kind of fun.
Good morning.
Yeah, I think a lot of, I mean, when I was personally in line, I mean, it was like.
I'm hoping that's sort of significantly less in the future.
Exactly.
Oh, okay. That's 17.
Oh, right, I spotted past your eyes.
All right, I'll say activities.
Break out.
Oh, we will, we'll find.
Right, let me know if you need tips.
Well, I got to figure it out today. I have an app. Not desperate.
CPAC presentation.
Yeah.
We're going to go.
Do you want to take this?
Okay, great, perfect.
Yes, absolutely. That's right.
Mr. Friedman, through you, I did the math, 348 years, so, yeah, pretty impressive.
And we let him pass fourth grade math. Awesome, why don't we keep going then? We didn't officially adjourn for anything, so we can just keep going. Why don't we handle and work through the CPAC presentation next? That's okay?
Do you want me to scroll slides or do you want to?
Whatever's easiest for you.
All right.
Thank you.
There you go.
Okay. So, hello, my name is Mira Reynolds.
And I'm Megan Perry.
And on the call, I believe, we have Joanne Gilbadi. And we have two other folks that sort of comprise our leadership team that were not able to be here tonight, Emily Walsh and Karen Mobark. And we just kinda came on to CPAC in January of this year. So, we've been spending the spring sort of rebranding, relaunching. And so, that started off with, what does a CPAC do? And we pulled from the Mash Special Ed Law that the school committee of all the districts in Massachusetts are supposed to establish a parent advisory council and membership should be offered to all parents of children with disabilities and other interested parties. So, it's not only for parents of kids with IEPs and 504s, it's everybody who's interested. And this is just an image of some of our flyer that, that we put together to try and get out into the community. So, more about what does a CPAC do? As we said, membership is open to everybody who's interested. We meet regularly with school officials. Cynthia Conant, right there, is frequently emailing and on the phone with me. We are supposed to provide advice to the district regarding special ed programs and policies, participate in planning, development, and evaluation of special ed programs, advise the school committee on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities. And the school districts are charged with assisting us in maintaining our operations and activities to the extent they are available. So, this spring, we've managed to do a few basic, kinda neat things. We rebuilt the leadership team. We had a meet and greet event in January. We did an anonymous caregiver needs assessment, which was really helpful. We had a good response rate, about ten percent response rate. We met with all the elementary school principals to get feedback from them on how to reach out to teachers especially, because we really feel that connecting with teachers is the best way to get in touch with families. And last week, we had the opportunity to collaborate on an event with the North Reading Commission on Disabilities and the Police Department on summer safety for individuals with autism. That really was helpful in educating everybody about elopement and wandering and it's, it's an issue that even though it focused on children with autism, it affects people with dementia, people with other disabilities. So, it was, it was really great for the Commission on Disabilities to include us in that and to pair up with the, the Police Department. We also asked the district to send out a teacher survey to try to get some feedback on teachers on what they see as, as something, as places that CPAC can help. We made a new website and we provided teachers with some little thank yous just a couple of weeks ago, just pens and magnets that we just handed out to all of you and candy, of course, because, candy. This summer, we are hoping to be at National Night Out. We are planning on setting up events for the next school year. We have planned, we've reached out to all of the PAs and heard back from the elementary school PAs that are all eager to, to allow us to partner with them and hopefully work out doing some co-sponsored events during the school year. And I think we will reach out to Parks and Rec, the Community Impact Team, and more with the North Reading Police Department and the Commission on Disabilities, because I think those community partnerships are really going to help us be seen as a community organization and, and be able to help. So, our plans for next year are grand, if we can, if we can do it. The district has been kind enough to agree to put flyers with all of the beginning of the year, special ed communications that go out, mentioning that, here's CPAC, here's the website, here's how you get in touch and what we can do to help. We're working out being at start of year, school year events to also hand out flyers that people know who we are. We're trying to get some brand recognition. We will continue our teacher outreach. The elementary school principals suggested that we attend or send little videos on what we can do at, at faculty meetings. We'll do some sort of thank you again at the end of the year. We'll be at Town Day on September fourteenth. We want to do more meet and greets with families. I think that is a key thing that, that CPAC provides, is just a space for caregivers of children with disabilities to come together and just sort of realize we're not alone and that a lot of us face similar challenges. We'll probably do two or three of those. We'll do three or four webinars and continue collaborating, like we said earlier, in, with community events. Before I move on to the questions we have for you, does anybody have any questions for us?
And maybe this would be more appropriate at the end, but first of all, thank you. And it's, it's great to meet you both. I know that you said you're both new, relatively new to the role. I'd be curious, and you can share this now at the end, is, one thing that I observed in joining school committee was I learned more about what it can and cannot do, right? And have you learned now what you, do you feel like it's given you more clarity about what you can and cannot do and how, what have you learned, I guess would be my question asked, since joining? And how is that going to shape what you do moving forward?
That's a good question and one I did not anticipate.
I'm sorry. You can answer at the end.
I think, I've, I've learned a lot.
I think, I mean, I think with anything, it's hard breaking through, right? You need exposure, you need to create those connections. And it's hard, in a noisy world, to make enough noise that anyone notices you. But I know that, I speak for both Mira and myself, we're parents with stu, with children and who went through a special process. There's no roadmap. And if you, if it's your first child and you're going through this, you can feel very lost. And so, we're very passionate about helping those families feel less lost. And, you know, even if there is no official roadmap for the child, because everyone's journey is unique, we can accompany the parent on a little bit of that journey and just keep them company. And I think that that is valuable and we're eager to bring that enthusiasm out there. And I think the more people we're able to touch, even if we just start with a few families that we can make feel heard and, and valued and supported, that we can gain traction from there. But it certainly is a learning process and I'm sure we'll learn a lot more along the way.
And one other question, I'm sorry. And I forgive me, because I don't know the, this might be a stupid one, but when, when a child enters through the school, through Cynthia, Cynthia, do you mention them to new families? Do you say, there's a resource here? Because the idea of a roadmap is so comforting, or someone to walk alongside. I, I'm wondering if, do you offer them as a resource?
So, I think that I would, first, sorry, before I ask your question, I just wanna start by saying that I think that the individuals are not giving themselves enough credit. They came on in January, halfway through the school year, stepping into a role. Anytime anybody is doing that, it's very, very challenging. Very quickly, they, you know, were in touch with me, we've been collaborating, they have brought forward new ideas that we haven't had before, which I've loved. We've kinda talked about your strategy of reaching the teachers and dropping off, you know, baskets at every single building so that every single teacher received something. It was just a remarkable outreach effort. And, and that was, that came from you all. And that was really a different way to kind of approach, you know, what we do with CPAC and how we work together. I would also say to that same idea of sending out the flyers at the start of the school year, you know, as part of our beginning of the year correspondence, special education teachers send out an email to the families of students on their caseload with information introducing themselves, what they can expect. We have the safeguard, the procedural safeguards attached in that email now. After collaborating and brainstorming, we're going to attach that flyer to that. And now, we've also taken it one step beyond that and we have, every time an IEP is sent out, so to your question, with an initial IEP, that flyer would go out with the proposed IEP. So, we've worked that into our workflow as well. So, I would just say, you know, there has been a ton of work and effort and energy and collaboration and we're very, very grateful for everything that you've done so far. And I can only just begin to imagine what you're gonna accomplish next year, watching what you've done just from January until now. So, thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I, I'll, I'll just make some comments. I don't have questions, but I, I'll insert my comments here, though. The only correction I have is, I don't think you really rebuilt things, I think you built from scratch. And so, just, just to be very honest, like, the, you've done, in six months, you've done more for the CPAC than I've seen in the, you know, eight years that I've been on school committee. And so, like, you know, and, and Samira and, and Robbie, you know, you welcomed everybody into your home right in the very beginning, everybody that stepped up. I mean, it, it's wonderful. Like, the last few years, it's been one person trying to do everything. And so, you really wanted to build from the, you know, build up, which is great. And so, you did a ton there. I also appreciate those challenges. I mean, a lot of people come to those meetings upset, to be honest with you, and frustrated. You know, again, I'm a parent of a child with special needs. And so, like, I, I understand some of the frustrations that come to it and you've dealt with that very well, you've helped to be constructive and, you know, hear and support, but at, at the same time, help people learn the ways that they can move forward. And so, you know, I just thank you for that. And, yeah, I mean, you, you've just been, and, and you're involved beyond just like, it's not just like, let's do these two or three things. Like, you're saying, how, how can I do beyond? You're trying to build, build a community and I think it's a great way of doing it. And so, you know, it's been great to meet you. And, and the other thing I was gonna say is, like, even beyond just CPAC, I mean, you've tried to look at the role of, you know, students with special needs in broader, the broader context. Like, we've been, we've talked quite a bit about budget in the last couple of years. You know, we've talked about, you know, you reached out when a position was gonna be cut, about like, what that position was and you asked questions there. And I think that's all the right questions. I, I don't know, I feel like I'm a poor liaison because like, I can't nearly meet your energy on things, but, you know, appreciated the time that we've gotten to work together. And just appreciate that there's somebody that cares enough to, about your kids and other people's kids too, so thank you for that.
Thank you. And, and I did mean to thank you, Scott, for being a fantastic liaison. You definitely fielded many of my many questions with great patience, so I appreciate it.
I, when I, when I, I don't check my email every day and so, like, I'd say, it's something that takes me a few days to get back to you, but I really do appreciate everything, so thank you.
I guess I'll try to answer one of your questions about, you know, how we can support you. So, and I, and I echo the sentiment on CPAC went from zero to sixty in the last six months. So, just credit to you and everybody, you know, online as well. I think that's, it's a really, we're making the right steps here. I guess I, I would answer, how, you know, how you could support us. One of the goals that we have, and I would call almost a mission, is getting, you know, fact-based data out to the community. What we've found is, when the data's out there, when facts are out there, people in this town are rallying around that information. So, what information can we share with the community? How can we get that information out there so parents are aware, not only of the resources that they have, but just the, the general facts of what you do, how we fit in the community, how important it is? I think being at all these events are fantastic and I think that's one way that we can help you, is kind of helping provide that outreach to parents that may not even know that this is available to them. And then, I, you know, I'd turn the question back around, is, is there something the school committee in your, you know, four or five months? Yeah, I'm excited, but I'll wait, I'll wait.
No, no, it's there.
Yeah, but yeah, you, what, you know, is there something we're not doing that, that you would love to see us do in the future?
Another question I did not plan for, even though it's, it's up there. I, I think one of the things, getting back to your original question on what have we learned? It's interesting when I, I, I work with a lot of lawyers, I'm not one myself, but when I first read the law and I saw that it was mentioning the school committee quite a bit and then realizing that most of our interactions are with the district, I was a little confused on, on what are we supposed to be talking to? Who are we supposed to be working with and, and, and learning from? So, I think it's something that maybe we can figure out together over the next few months. But just helping spread the word is, is sort of number one, I think.
Yeah, I, I think our job, and I'll, I'll speak for me, but I think I speak for most of the committee on the, our job is to make the best environment for as many students as possible, right? That's like, I think it's our number one job. So, whatever we can do to bring that to fruition, certainly, I think we'd be interested in, in hearing that.
For the record, Tim never speaks for me, but I agree with him.
I knew you'd agree with that one.
And Tim and Jen have worked and you've probably seen it, and I think it's been very effective, talking about, you know, bringing information to the community. Started a social media sort of education campaign for the school committee. And I think this is an opportunity for, if you have facts that you want to share, information that you wanna share about CPAC, that's something that we can help push out as well, whether it's awareness or, you know, little did you know type of, like, slide with little facts so that we can continue to share what you're doing for these families that need your support. And then also, if you're working with families, just reminding them of what the school committee's role is and what's, what's going on right now with budget and just keeping informed on that, I think is kind of, we can help each other.
Definitely, definitely. And we've been posting on Facebook, we try to post every couple of days. And, and we did tag the school committee today, saying, CPAC's gonna be in school committee tonight.
Oh, I noticed the shares too. I see you reshare our content. I noticed the shares.
I think the, the meet and greets are just such a wonderful idea, as you said, you know, getting through someone accompanying you on this, on this journey. And the faculty outreach, I think, is so important. And then, just a couple of ideas on how else to engage with the district. When Tim was talking about data and getting information out, you had some sort of one-pager and then, I feel like at the beginning of the year, when people are invigorated and excited about the start of the school year, maybe having a table, like the back-to-school nights or something like that. And then, with each of the parent associations, you know, saying, can we be on the agenda in the fall, the winter, and the spring or something like?
I was gonna say exactly the same thing.
Three times a year, those are the people that are usually most engaged in the school and, and things like that. And a lot of times, the principals are on and, and things like that. So, even if it's, if it's data they've already heard, like, keep letting them know how, how important it is and, and building your community and, excellent job, ladies.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say exactly the same thing. Come back more. Let's, uh, let's put this on more. I mean, no, we don't always get the biggest audience, but then it becomes a springboard for putting something on social media, here's what we talked about. It, it's just, the more you repeat something, more it just becomes ingrained. So, you're more than welcome to come back. We would love to have you as often as you want to. Grace our presence.
Thank you.
So, we, we very much appreciate the work you do. Please, feel free.
So, thank you both so much for all the input this year. It's really incredible. A thought that I had, we do a new family welcome, we did it for the first time last year. And one thing that we learned was, there were people that came and lived in the community for five or six years, they've just never had that experience. So, I think that it's something we're definitely gonna do again every year, so I'll send you that information. Even if it's a, a table or some things to hand out, or just, you know, it's, it's really geared towards people that are new to North Reading, but it can be pretty. So, I think that would be a good place to introduce to a great resource. I wanna thank Ms. Conant and Ms. Sacco for their relationship with you. But I think there's so many things, I guess a question I have is, like, do you partner with other CPACs in local districts? And is there an opportunity to do something big, you know, with a piggyback on it?
We're in touch with other CPACs and we do share ideas a lot informally. The, the previous chair did try to sort of get a regional CPAC organization going towards the end of her tenure, but it didn't really take off. the end of her tenure, but it didn't really take off. But that is something that I think in the future, we should definitely leverage. We already share information on our Facebook page about this other town is doing this presentation, but it's open to everybody. So we do share resources that way and information that way. But yeah, something more formalized, I think in the future would be great.
And a last thought, it's just I love the cross-promotion. So we do this with CIT or the Services Use Council. Like when we bring in a speaker, I love it to do sort of all of us sponsoring and pushing it out and vice versa. So when you have things, I love to push it off, or when we bring in a parent speaker. And also to help us think about, you know, things that we can bring in across. Because I think a lot of what you offer and have offered over the years benefits all parents, too. So I think, I think coming up with some of those pieces that are cross-cutting. And sometimes, you know, it's offered this year, and you're two years away as a parent from knowing that your child has a disability. So if you go to that presentation early and then you, you have a child with some of the concerns that you might have, you pro-act. So I think getting that out to all parents is great. So thank you for all of you.
Thank you. And we do want to thank the district for being as responsive as you all have been in helping us push out material and information. And as I'm learning, speaking with these other CPACs, many CPACs do not have the relationship with the district or the school committee that we are fortunate to have. So I think the more we can leverage that, the stronger the whole school community will
I think we're pretty much in agreement to say thank you for everything you do. It's, our commitment to you is because of the work you do. It's because of the value you bring. So thank you. It's our thanks to you, not you to us. Thank you.
And it's really, it's a core team of us that have all just come together since January, that, you know, we truly are a team effort. And I include my family as supporting staff, helping me put together baskets.
And Mira is the engine, so Mira deserves. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Back to our regularly scheduled program. I believe we're walking past the first reading, if I'm correct?
Second reading, yes.
Second reading.
Mr. Freeman, I would recommend we place that on summer agenda?
Yeah, I agree. And why don't we go to the calendar, school committee calendar for next year?
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. I just wanted to open the discussion again. I was having a lot of audio difficulties that evening. I just want to make sure that I had the dates for the summer. And also, I think we needed, September eighth was not a good date. And I just wanted to make sure, do we come to a consensus on a night that would work? Or?
Give me one minute.
Do you want to go week by meeting by meetings?
So I was the problem child with July. And I know, like, it sounds like Dr. Jilly, you're out of town either the week before or the week before that, I believe, or you're unavailable.
I'm unavailable on the fourteenth. The twenty-eighth's not great either, but I'll make it work, or we don't have to do a Monday.
I was going to say, I don't know why, we don't have to stick to it.
Yeah. And so, and I know that Jen started a job where it's like daytime is not.
I used to be at night, yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's not an option. So my problem is that selfishly, I have a flight really, really early on the twenty-second. And you all have wives, and you know that if there's children to get ready for a flight and mom's not there, no one's going to be able to get on the plane. Sorry, husbands, it's just you guys. So I'm just wondering if like, that's my conflict, so.
We do it earlier in the day?
Yeah, but that's, that's why I requested. But then, I mean, we could do like five, but I don't want to, I don't want to put that on Jen. Like I have more flexibility the end of the week prior or like whatever. And I am sorry to be a pain, but I know I have to be up at like.
I can do, I can do five. And especially if it's virtual, too.
Yeah, it would be virtual.
Yeah, I think that was just virtual.
Yeah, and I don't, again, I don't mean to be a problem child.
No, 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 it's fun.
Five would be good. That would be great, and I would really appreciate it.
By PM.
By PM. I mean, AM's fine, too, but I don't know if everyone.
So five PM on the twenty-first would work?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Everybody else okay?
That's good with me.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the flexibility.
And then did August twenty-fifth work? That should be fun.
It works. Two days before my birthday, so we can bring gifts.
And that, that may be virtual, but sometimes it's not. We'll figure that out as we get closer.
Usually for the goals, we usually do them in person.
Yeah.
And that's usually the double meeting, right? Where we do like a four-thirty and then the other.
I believe it was the September twenty-second date that doesn't work, correct?
Correct. That is, Jewish holiday, for sure.
So, you know, we're trying to stick to the second and fourth. We could go to the twenty-ninth. We could go to.
I could even, I mean, we could do later in the week, that week, too. I mean, I don't know.
Does the twenty-ninth work?
I mean, there's a long break because we just have town meeting in there. So the twenty-ninth.
That's fine.
Isn't that twenty-ninth of September?
Instead of the twenty-second, the twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth could work.
I can do that.
Just checking holiday schedules quick to make sure.
Yeah, of course, not till first.
And was there anything else that stuck out to anyone as wanting to update or change?
I'm going to be gone October twenty-seventh, but I'm not important, though. I'm just going to be gone that week.
I'll second that motion. Oh, sorry.
But again, I think it's fine.
Okay. So we're good with the calendar with those changes?
I think, I'm just looking through the rest of it. I think it makes sense. I mean, it's tough for me to plan out like quarters of a year into next March, but.
The only, I think the only question we had was just like, I think this year we got rid of a few meetings, but like, there's only one meeting October, only one meeting in November. That's the only thing where, again, I think we condensed some stuff down. It's probably fine. Actually, October twenty-seventh, the only challenge is if I'm on the, if I'm the representative of the capital improvement, and I'm not going to be there for that meeting.
So October sixth is likely town meeting, and then we would have another meeting on the twenty-seventh. Thirteenth is a holiday.
Thirteenth is a holiday. Could we do the twentieth?
But do we need two school committee meetings? I don't know that we, because we're going to have two meeting, two Monday night meetings in October, if you count the town meeting. Bless you.
Are you saying instead of the twenty-seventh?
Yeah. I'm saying if you want to move up to the.
Or move it to the twentieth.
I'm just saying, I can't be there, and I'm the representative to CIPC this year.
Yeah.
And that's, I just realized that's CIPC.
Yeah, it just gets at that.
Right.
Trying, trying to stay on the second and fourth.
We're on the wrong one, but with a holiday and then town meeting, it's like, we're kind of limited. Would people be okay with the twentieth or not?
That's fine.
Yeah, that's fine. Anything for you, Scott.
Oh.
Well, see, CIPC is ready by the twentieth, but.
Well, this is, no, this is usually us just talking about what we want to submit to them.
Right.
Actually, the only thing there is, Michael, does that give you enough time to have that ready? Moving it up a week or should we move it back a week, like?
We could also add the tenth if you wanted to.
I should be able to have enough time for that. You know, it should provide enough time.
I don't believe that interferes with Veterans Day if we want to add a second November meeting and do it.
I would, I would rather add something in November, especially as we're getting around budget updates, if we are really, you know, as we're getting more serious about an override and all of that, I think we need to.
So if we were to keep the twenty-seventh, keeping the second and fourth of the month, and then do November tenth, because there's, I don't believe there's a Veterans Day issue this year, we could then move a lot of that, those agenda items, capital proving to November tenth. Does that work, Michael? Do you think it's too late?
No, I think that's fine. I mean, usually they ask for it on, you know, mid-November or so, but.
How does that work?
If I'm, that should be fine.
Serves the same purpose.
I mean, I would just miss the twenty-seventh. I miss the elementary school improvement plans, but that's fine. I'm okay with that.
Wait, so sorry, we're keeping the twenty-seventh?
Yeah, and adding the tenth, November tenth.
Okay.
So we would just be splitting so elementary.
This will all go in your calendar as soon as I'll send them out, too.
So elementary school improvement would be October twenty-seventh, and then CIP, the capital improvement would be November tenth. That would be the main thing.
So is that eleventh? The eleventh is a day off from school?
Yes.
It would be, yeah.
Okay.
Sound good for now?
And then.
And then the twenty-fourth is Thanksgiving, with a week of Thanksgiving, right?
Yeah, correct.
We're adding that?
No, that's already.
That's already there, okay, yeah.
And I don't think I have anything. I think that was my one conflict that I knew. So I'll just miss that one.
And I have to, I have to update the dates on the right, the dates on the left, or what are you looking at? Essentially, the topics are on the right, but I got to update the dates, obviously. Sound good?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
I don't know if we need to officially vote to approve it. Do you want to do that, Mr. Freeman, or?
Uh, yeah. Can I hear a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar as amended?
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. I believe that brings us down to routine matters. So I'm missing something. I think that brings us to routine matters. The minutes.
I can do minutes. Let's see. Move to approve the open session meeting minutes for May twelfth, twenty-two, twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Five-zero.
Okay, move to approve the meeting minutes, let's try that again. Meeting minutes from the open session, May twen, um, sorry, I might make a moment. May nineteenth, twenty-two, twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
Okay, let's try that again.
Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, none. So five-zero.
Okay. Move to approve the meeting minutes from June ninth, twenty-two, twenty-five, open session as written.
Second.
That's all right.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Five-zero.
He was waiting to do that to you, you know. Okay.
He thinks it's fun.
Yeah.
She thinks it's fun, too, so.
Uh, and do we have a budget update?
Uh, there is a budget update this, this meeting. So included in the packet, though, was kind of put in this morning, was.
I'm not sure if you see a link to it. That's all right.
It is in the, if you go into the school committee documents for this meeting, it's in there.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
It is in there. So this is, this reflects financial activity through the beginning of June, through like last, middle of last week. But I think, you know, the district continues to take the steps that we need to take at this point in the fiscal year to successfully close out fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. You'll see on the report that we've certainly exceeded the tuition budget, and that is because we're in the process of.
Do you have that, Andrew?
I'll put it up. It's because we are in the process of prepaying the special education tuitions that we had planned for during the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget process. We do plan on exceeding the budgeted forecasted amount of a hundred and fifty thousand, like we've typically been able to do. We expect to a little more than double that, both due between three-twenty-five and three-fifty with what was available and what we were able to repurpose from some other available funds, mainly through some available funds in supplies, in some maintenance areas, in some utilities, which has typically been the case just through conservative budgeting, conservative spending throughout the year. So that, the majority of any additional funding is put towards special education prepayments, which is what we had discussed. As, as we talked about, we were able to kind of address a lot of unforeseen costs in some maintenance areas, HVAC, boiler maintenance at the elementary schools. But we were able to do this all within the budget. It was a relative moderate renter with mild temperatures and moderate snow accumulation. So the snow and ice accounts and grounds, you know, all stayed within budget. Most of all, the payroll accounts were projected and are going to kind of close within budget. We did have to address, as has been typical, several leave of absences due to a variety of extended leaves this year. But we were able to address that within, within budget by appointing some long-term substitutes and handle any of these changes, you know, all with what we had budgeted in our substitute account. There are some salary accounts that have some balances, mainly because of these staff members being out for extended leaves at times when, when without pay at different parts of the year. And we have some balances in those, in those accounts, which are being repurposed, as we have discussed, through for special education prepayments. The food service program performed well throughout the school year. Again, they averaged over seventy percent average daily participation throughout the school year, so they, we had some really strong revenue in that account. We did officially get the administrative review closeout just recently. I can kind of include a final copy for you and probably maybe in the July report and get it in this packet. But we had some just very minor, minor corrective action recommendations that we have addressed. But overall, it was a very, very strong report. And the district is doing a lot of things really, really well. So I think we are in, you know, despite some of the challenges and the anticipated costs that we had dealt with, particularly in special education and other areas in tuitions and transportation, we were able to, through conservative spending, conservative, you know, budgeting, being vigilant in how we spent our funding throughout the year, we were able to address those, and we are prepared to close out the fiscal year in good standing.
Excellent. Keep going.
No, I have some questions.
Uh, I just wanted to make one comment for anybody who may be listening. There's terminology that comes to dealing with budgets and accounting. When you say we are in good standing, that is a term of how you are ending the fiscal year or how you are dealing with your budget. We would not be in good standing had we not made cuts, had we not changed our financial outlook through reductions. So when people hear, oh, things are strong, that is much more of a technical term than it is an understanding of where we are fiscally. So I just wanted to clarify for the average audience who hears.
I mean, it means we're projected to end the current fiscal year due to some of the changes we dealt with.
Correct.
You know, not in a deficit.
Correct.
But in, you know, in a small surplus.
Correct, correct.
So I have a few questions, but I want to start with a comment and just on the point Mr. Freeman was just making. I just want to congratulate you, Michael. I mean, you've seen districts around here that there's been so many unforeseen things going on around here and inflation and everything else going on, to end with being able to prepay To end with, uh, being able to prepay not just what we budgeted, but more than that, I mean, I, our district is so fortunate to have you here and so I just want to say it again.
I appreciate that.
Few, few comments and questions first, food service, um, do you have any idea what percentage of students took breakfast this year versus what that was compared to last year?
It was definitely significantly up from last, from last year. I can get the daily, I think it wasn't quite at seventy percent, which is what the lunch program was doing, but I think it was. Particularly at the elementary schools, a little bit less, secondary schools was lower. Elementary schools, I would say, got up to, into the forty percent.
Really, that many, forty percent taking them?
In some, it's not, I wouldn't say daily, but it was close to that. I think that was mainly the result of us offering it universally. So previously it was much, just the way we had scheduled it, it was mostly geared towards students in the before school program at the elementary level. Middle school and high school, it's always kind of been there. But I think us adding the, using some of the available revenue and the funding that we did have by some of the strong performance. Um, and adding the, the breakfast carts in different, in points of sales in different areas of the school. Um, the principals working with the food service director and the program to allow students to have a little bit better access to the, to the breakfast program. It, it gradually, once we got that going, um, which was like November, December, especially second half of the year, it really did start to pick up and increase.
Yeah, and, and we should congratulate the food service director, she's done a phenomenal job this year, I think.
Yes, she has.
The, so on food service, I know one of the questions on the audit was about the, how much that balance can be.
Yeah.
Fund, and do we have any resolution on that and do we know where we're at for?
Yeah, so we have a resolution, that was probably the biggest thing that we went back and forth on was, um, you know, the balance that was. We had projected or we had closed out the year with, and then they, they kind of, mostly auditing last, last year in terms of the financials. Cause that was the year we had closed out, they're also looking at this year. But they were looking at the balance sheet and every, and the income, basically from last year, that was, that was final. We, we definitely have, they had to put together a spending plan of how we're gonna spend that money. And we could do it over a number of years, it wasn't like we had to do it all by August or start our next school year or, so we have, we have a, a few years to put that together. So, the spending plan that we had, that was the biggest back and forth that we did have on with them, um, was approved. In terms of investing back in equipment, replacing some of the refrigeration devices, um. You know, commercial equipment that's being used in the kitchen, meaning at the elementary schools that are getting or past their useful life. Adding, when appropriate, some of the staffing, cause the meal per labor, our analysis is getting higher and above recommendation industry standard. So we are looking to do that, we have, we started doing that last, at the end of last school year in terms of posting some new, new positions out there to get, to get some new staffing involved. Adding some incentives and so forth for, for the staff to re- reach some benchmarks to it, so everything we were doing in, um. And add, adding options, um, adding some furniture and some, being creative in certain ways. Um, display, display boards for menus and interactive boards that we can display and have messaging and so forth, were all things that were approved.
For athletic, I know there were some concerns about the athletic revolving account.
Yes.
Do we know where that ended up?
So we are projected to end with, um, certainly a, a balance, we, it was, uh, it will probably though be at the lowest point it's been in years. As we had talked about, but we are gonna end with a small balance between, you know, about twenty thousand dollars, fifteen to twenty thousand dollars.
It's, it's, it's only twenty thousand.
Yeah, yes.
Which is significant, that's significantly less than it was last year.
Correct, yeah, correct. We, we lost about fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty?
Yeah, in the range of, in between forty and fifty thousand. We're so close now, I just got the transportation bill for June, I mean, the, the teams did very, very well.
That's, I was about to say.
The transportation bill for June was like twice as much as it's ever been.
Right, so many, so many programs doing well, um. Do we know, have you closed out, do you have any idea what, um, the universal fee cap did, like what was the financial impact of the universal?
Yeah, so we got, I mean, at, to date, we've only paid out four families a refund in the end. Based on after our review and it was in, it was about three thousand dollars.
And they're more that could have been eligible but didn't choose to.
Potentially, yes, yeah, yeah.
And then the, the last thing I would just say is a comment and a, and a question, um, capital projects, I, I just, my comment is I appreciate town meeting, um. Voting for what was submitted to capital, the, from the capital improvement planning committee and not making changes on town meeting floor, I just think it's. You know, important that so many people put a lot of work into that, um, and so I really do appreciate that, um.
Yeah, absolutely.
Supported that, but towards that, there were some things for the school and I just wanted to see if you give updates on, have you ordered whatever we need from those capital projects?
So the two capital projects that were funded in the June town meeting, uh, the school roof, for the hood school roof phase two of that. And that's gonna revolve, um, ceiling and coating about sixty or seventy percent of the roof, it's not all of it, there's still gonna be about thirty or forty percent remaining. So we anticipated that that was gonna be supported, so we had done a bid for that back in the spring, early March, um, and got pricing for that. Through the bid, I would say, um, right around April vacation time, you know, third week in April, so we, we awarded everything pending appropriation at town meeting. So, so everything, um, went through as you know. So we actually issued the, um, notice to proceed by the awarding company and I think they're gonna start next week, believe it or not. So they're, 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 they had POs ready to go to order their materials and so forth. So they could, the plan is that they could start as early as next week to get that done. And then based on the fact that the bids were more favorable than what we had forecasted. And that there was some money available in the account rolling over from phase one, we think we're gonna, we are planning to award the, the, one of the bid alternates. Which just means it's gonna be less to do next year. So it's another section of the roof that we can do this year.
And the other one was, were they boards for technology?
So they, yeah, so that, that's proceeding as well, I think we actually already have a date selected where they're gonna come and start doing the middle school boards.
Friday.
Yeah.
Just everyone leaves.
Yeah.
Well, and again, like, we, we, I started by conre- by thanking you for the work you do, but that's the other thing that's not seen, I mean. It's great that the town supports the capital project, but it takes so much management from you and just thinking about it and getting it done in advance to get it done because.
Yeah.
So, there's lead time for contractors, there's so much that has to be done.
The June town meeting, although it's, there's a lot of positives to it, but then that, the one drawback is capital. It's late to get on the docket for projects, so, um, if we were to wait till town meeting, we would never, these projects would all be happening a year from now, most likely. So we had to just anticipate that and.
Yeah, and they, and they get, they get more expensive and you have to go through the process again and all that, so again, it's just your leadership that gets us there, so thank you again, so.
Great, no, thank you.
That's all, sorry, I'm just.
No, all good, any other questions, comments?
No, just thank you.
Yeah, I think we all agree.
No, I appreciate it, I have, I'm just, I have a very good staff, um, between the directors, you know, facilities director, food service director, and then the staff that. Works in the business office, they have everything kind of down. You know, it's, it's like a well-oiled machine in terms of the closeout and everything that has to happen, Sabita Pie, um, as everyone knows, she's exceptional.
Well, we think, we thank everybody involved, but we also, you're here, so we'll thank you.
I know, thank you.
Excellent, uh, why don't we keep moving, is there any other questions about the budget? Okay, so that brings us to, uh, staffing.
None at this time.
Um, and bids and donations, Mr. Sullivan.
Buckle up, we have ten. You ready? All right, Scott, no shenanigans on this one.
All right, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty cents from the hood school parent association to help fund the hood school field day.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed, five zero.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars from the girls lacrosse boosters to be put towards the coach bus for the playoff game against Cohasset.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed, five zero.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of one thousand and fifty-nine dollars from Charles Crouchy to be put towards the repair of the golf carts at the high school.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion?
Uh, just, just pointing out that Mr. Crouchy was just honored for the work he's done and that, just to see that he's still giving back is nice, so, just call that out.
And we have golf carts.
Which is critical.
He was very passionate about those golf carts at the athletics I'm committing.
Is that for Dr. Daley to get around the campus a little quicker?
Yeah.
Are we gonna see you going, going around?
Mr. Freeman, if I could, they, we've spoken about this over the last year to talk about replacing the carts when we had people out here. Mr. Crouchy and the, the hornet hall of fame group looked at the fact that the carts we have are in very good shape and it was definitely worth repairing them, so that's the direction we've gone, so.
Tesla engine in them. All right, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, five zero.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of one thousand dollars from Kathleen and Steven Gervey to be used towards the performing arts program at the high school.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed, that's five zero.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of three thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-seven cents from the bachelor parents organization. To be put towards the bachelor school duck tour and swan boat field trip.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Closed, five zero.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of one hundred dollars from the Celeste White to be put towards the boys tennis team program.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed, five zero.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of twenty-eight hundred dollars from Matthew Laverdiar to be put towards the boys and girls track program and donate the proceeds from the sales at the snack shack.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed, that's five zero.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of four hundred dollars from China cuisine to be put towards the boys and girls tennis program at two hundred dollars each.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Closed, that's five zero.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of fifty dollars from Tracy Corbett to be put towards the softball program for the snap raise fundraiser.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Closed, that's five zero.
We're at the home stretch. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of one thousand dollars from Chartwells to be put towards a scholarship for two high school students at five hundred dollars each.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed, that's five zero. There you go, well done, sir.
You didn't stumble once, I could barely get through three.
And for all those donating, I mean, we joke around sometimes because, uh, it takes a little time, but we really are appreciative, so thank you. Uh, okay, we, any grants, doesn't look to be any.
None at this time.
Uh, we've already handled the overnight trip requests, so social media.
It's good that's on the standing agenda, huh?
It is good, allowed them to come ten months early.
Uh, any social media update?
I would just piggyback, or, or, I'm just gonna say, um, what, what we talked about with CPAC, that, I'm, I know you're already on it, but. Perfect opportunity to share some bullet points on what they do for social media, right?
Yeah, I think that'd be, yeah.
I'm sure your brain's already developing the slide, but.
I think, I think listing the personnel that are retiring and then putting the three hundred and forty-eight years of experience is.
Oh, yeah, I like that, that's good.
I think that'd be a good one, like that we're losing three hundred and forty-eight years of experience from.
Not sure I'd phrase it like that.
This evening.
Right, so. You might want to check the math, I don't.
Yeah, I'll check my math.
Just in case, but.
I'll have meta AI check it for me.
There you go.
No, that's a good one, I like that.
And maybe the picture, just to show the group. It's a nice group.
Well, and/or the fact that we got the budget passed, cause I don't know, that's been talked about. Anyway, this is great, um, any other updates, social media?
I don't think so, and, yeah, we'll, uh, probably have policy to take a look at it this summer or fall, just to see if there's any tweaks we want to make, so if there's any feedback, feel free to.
All right, why don't we keep moving, subcommittee updates, financial planning team, uh, we obviously talked about, uh, the, uh. Town meeting and, uh, happy that everything passed and went through, uh, but also went through some of the preliminary numbers. And just, you know, they, they don't look great. Uh, certainly nothing that I'd be willing to, uh, put a stake in the ground in just yet, but just the initial numbers are definitely gonna be off. And even a bigger gap than we were looking at this year, so we're, we're obviously gonna have much more discussion on it to come. Uh, very specifically looking at, uh, an override to try and fill that gap and, and see what we can do to, to make up for what we've lost. So, that's, without question, the numbers are, are showing unfortunately exactly what they thought, we thought they would. Even a couple of years ago, that the gap isn't getting smaller, it's getting bigger, so.
I think the, you know, the projection for new growth is a tad optimistic and for those that are watching online or everybody in the room here too. Um, I think, right, we have to acknowledge the fact that a lot of the cuts this year were free cash generating cuts, which is going to further. Divide the, the revenue from the expenses going into the year. And I think we knew that coming in, right, I think that was well discussed, but, um, I think that we're going to see the impact of that this year, we're not gonna see nearly as much free cash generated this year.
And, and if I had to guess, we got a, we got a, a good little bonus, nice little benefit by switching, uh, healthcare providers. I don't think we're gonna be able to ride that train next year, so I, I would assume that's gonna be, uh, a bit of a hit next year too.
On the municipal side, did they end up hiring all four firefighters, are, are all four on the budget, the final budget, do you remember?
I don't remember.
I think they delayed them, but I think it was all four, were the four or just two that was in there, I don't know, can't remember.
I don't remember off the top of my head, I don't want to give you an answer.
I, I, I couldn't remember either.
Yeah. Anything else, I think that was.
No, I think that's, that's a good summary.
Um, athletic subcommittee.
Um, I think the, the big news was Mr. Johnson retiring and.
That's big news.
It's big news and, and getting a, a new athletic director. Tim or Dr. Daley, anything else you want to add to athletics subcommittee? I feel like, I'm like, May twenty eighth, when was it, that was a long time ago.
I know, feels like forever.
No, I mean, the, the only other longstanding thing is figuring out how to, to get the, uh, the wall in the gym fixed finally, right, that's a, probably a discussion that, that took more time than it needed to, but. The athletic, the wall in the gym to be able to, to use that, and I think we're, we're just trying to figure out getting the right contractor in with the right level of insurance to get that.
Yeah, we have an update on, so we, we identified a contractor that's well qualified to do public work, that has the insurance, that's come down on their pricing. So between some of the fundraising dollars and what we've put together, we expect that to happen probably within the next month or so, so we can complete that job.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Great.
Excellent, uh, anything else on athletic, now we'll go to fine arts, anything on the fine arts, Scott?
Fine arts, just sort of reviewed, really successful, um, district art show, fine arts nights, everything's wrapping up for the season with the, the concerts and, um. Then, let's see, a kind of bit of fun news, notorious, um, Mrs. Kane shared that they have been given a recording contract.
Really?
I think they were just doing it the other day, I saw.
Yeah, and it's, they're, 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 they're fun, it's self-funded, um, or so, so, um, you know, it's not, it's not coming out of budget, but. They, um, had the opportunity to do that, so it's, it's the notorious kind of graduating class, if you will, so, that's doing it.
Wonderful.
Yeah, um, and let's see, um, just as always seeming like we're talking about updates, um, needed for the pack for speakers, HDMI, um. And that, uh, I don't know if there's any you want to add there.
I feel like we have a solution, that's a little bit different.
What are we looking for?
The speakers, I think they had said, like, they've been looking at trying to.
They did need the additional power for the speakers.
They've been looking, well, they've been looking at trying to hang them, but I think now the solution is to put them into the stage.
The ones on the floor?
I haven't told Michael this yet, but, but it would involve building out the stage a little bit.
You said you haven't told Michael, yeah.
No. But it may, um, allow us to also add some other ports and electricity that we don't currently have. Um, which might provide us with some other advantages, so we have to look at what that will tell us.
A lot of this delayed years, cause we're trying to get the plan, and now ultimately we're not gonna hang them anyways, we're just gonna put them in.
Pay, paying what?
Weren't, weren't we waiting for years to find the plans to be able to do it?
Came up with a creative solution.
Yes, and we have found the plans.
And now we got them and now we sent extra work to put them down.
Now there's still some concern about the hanging, so.
We came up with a creative solution and I think that's great.
And again, the other, um, item of note is of course the new administrative role of athletics and performing arts, what's the official title of that role?
Director of, um, athletics and student activities.
Student activities, okay, and just talking about how that's gonna look moving forward and it's gonna maybe be a little bit of a learning curve, but I think it will be really helpful for Dr. Daley and. Um, the, the process flow in the future.
Great.
If I can jump in on, on a couple things on that one, I think, I didn't know that until that last meeting, that like the athletic director position's now gonna oversee all of that too, which is cool. Arts and cultural vitality.
Oh, yeah, I thought that was an interesting one too.
Yeah, that was. Yeah, that was funded by a grant before, but it sounds like by getting the grant, there was a ton of work that our team had to do and a lot of oversight and there was discussion about whether we need to do that again or not.
Well, basically, the reporting requirements of the grant were so tedious that they, they're going to continue to do the work of the grant, but without the actual
Right.
grant because the, the, it was, it was almost taking all of their time to do, to satisfy the reporting, record, reporting agreement.
To be, Mr. Freeman, the, the grant is likely not going to run again next year. Um, this is year three. We were a ta- we were the one year three district, so there were a lot of tasks that we did. It's been a great program. I think what we heard was just some end of year frustrations. I was asked to present. I volunteered two other people to present because I think it's better coming from the staff. But I think it's a busy time of year. And so there was just a lot of that that I think came across there. I think overall, they're very happy with the process. The two people that did present, Carla Lister and Andy Dexter, have led this work for three years. And they did a phenomenal job representing the district, presenting at the DESI conference in, in last, on the seventh, last week. So they did a wonderful job working with DESI. So, and we're really, we've become a leader in the state in this work and, you know, I, I want that to go, to be known as well.
She was here for school, for a town meeting, too.
Yeah, well, and, and the last two things I was just going to add, number one, they also need a new piano, that probably going to be about five thousand dollars at some point, but then.
I haven't told Michael that yet, either.
Yeah. Yeah, five thousand dollars.
Okay.
And then the, the other thing is just, what exactly you just said, Mr. Freeman, I mean, going to a lot of the concerts, like, it's just nice to see how well they work for each other. Like, I know one person, like, they had their kid graduating, so somebody else was covering that and somebody got sick and they, somebody else came and did piano, like, Mrs. Kane did the piano for, you know, because the pianist was sick and just the number of hours that they put in, because whenever that
It's crazy.
pack is open, like, they're, they're doing it. And so it's just, yeah, they need a shout out as well, so.
Agreed.
Oh, and for social media, we could also put like championships, maybe. Congratulations, did you congratulate those?
We have baseball.
Congratulate the baseball, right?
Baseball, but I have a picture for track yet.
In the track, yeah.
Picture for track.
Excellent. Uh, policy subcommittee? Anything else on arts, I should say? I assume not. Policy subcommittee?
Uh, met today, talked about the health and wellness policy. We still have a few more red lines, I think, to make and then some collaboration with Dr. Daly and the administration. So we'll bring that back in the July meeting.
Um, for scheduled meetings, uh, and do you have another policy subcommittee scheduled?
Not yet.
We have to set, there's a bunch of TBDs up here, yeah, that's all right.
They'll sub the substance abuse coalition, which is next Monday, which is the twenty-third, I believe.
Nice.
Jo and I are going to go back and talk about that. She's taking the first meeting.
I have a fire station meeting next week. This will be fun.
They're always fun.
Don't get that confused with the substance abuse.
In the July, Mr. Freeman, the July meeting typically has the goals and evaluation, so I just, I'll email this evaluation subcommittee to touch base ahead of that meeting.
Yeah, so we will, we will handle the evaluation TBD. We didn't set a financial planning team meeting, did we? I don't, I don't remember a date.
We did not, but they did say there would be one.
Right. Administrative report.
Sure, just very briefly, I think there's some things we've discussed here quite a bit. I just wanted to share that we are rolling out with NRPS twenty thirty with some feedback from the community. So I'll be sending this out this week. It'll also be in the transcript as well. This is to get some feedback on the, the work that we've done in, through twenty twenty-five's plan. And then to get some ideas and suggestions for next steps. This will guide the work that we're doing this summer at our leadership retreat with our principals, directors, and then our entire teacher leadership team. So much more of that coming. And then the statewide graduation council, I just wanted to share that I've put that out. This is just from the Department of Ed. I did put out this call. This is really talking about the work that we did here when we talked about the competitive determination and the graduation requirements. There is a statewide council looking at this, and so they are seeking feedback from everyone in the community. So I will put out another reminder about that as well. Um, just wanted to recognize baseball and track for their divisions. I believe track, this is their third consecutive title. As well as the, the baseball team, which was great. And just a great moment for Mr. Johnson and Mr. LaPratt, sort of as their last event in their careers to be a state championship was pretty special. They were out at, I was able to be out there with them at, and Polar Park in Worcester, which is great venue. It was, it was really, really special day, yeah. And the middle high school decennial anniversary. So I just wanted to mention this. This is the, this fall will be the tenth anniversary of the middle school opening, which is when this building officially completely opened. I think we should do, I am suggesting that we do, and I hope that you will support me in having a, a modest reception, just to celebrate, to invite the school building committee back, some of the leaders, community folks to come back and just to celebrate. And maybe take a, a brief walk or some slideshow or something of the, the building. It's still in great shape. And I think for people to, to recognize that would be a good idea. I did get a few people asking, how come we didn't do something last fall? But in my mind, the building didn't fully open until this fall. So that was my thinking. And then I thought it might be a nice time. We do need to dedicate the multipurpose field to Mr. Karucci and maybe since he's the school committee chair, the, the secretary of building committing chair, sorry. It might be nice to do sort of both all at the same time.
That'd be great.
And so we do need to identify what that marker is and where it goes. And then we would develop a similar recognition for the softball field. My thought is to maybe do that closer to the opening of the softball season in the spring of twenty twenty-six. But I just wanted to share that and just gather any thoughts that anyone may have.
Any chance we have to, to recognize the, the accomplishments in this town, especially academic and, and where we center our school lives? I think it's great. So this is fantastic.
I would just say, how many years of the debt is left? Twenty years of the debt left now or?
You are celebrating with that.
Always the downer, always the downer.
I'm just saying, like, we're ten years through our mortgage, so, you know. That should be the date, right? But that, did that start later or earlier? I don't know.
When it's all paid off, you mean?
Yeah, I mean, like, when did the debt actually start? Was it, was it after it was completed or I don't even remember?
The borrowing started.
I think it's really good to do separate ceremonies for the two named fields. I think those are both a really big deal and it's more in tune with like, do it, start up with a softball team, have more of the athletics involved in that. I think that would be really great, too.
And I figured there'd be a lot of the same, people maybe celebrating both and, and so just a night, again, a modest event. I'm not thinking a, you know, just a, a, a social event. Just to bring people together that worked hard in this building. Maybe a few former school committee members, leaders, you know, people that were involved in that for many, many years, just to, just to come back and, and for me to pay our, my thanks as well to the work that they did, so.
Great.
Do we have signs for them yet? Or I think there was, was there a question on the funding?
There, there is not, and so we need to figure that process out. I do have some indication that there may be some support from different groups for that, so. It's usually on the, according to the policy, it's, it's the person who makes the nomination is responsible for that. But I think that we do have some supports to work on that. So I would, I would be working with them to figure that out, yeah.
I would just say, make sure we have that before we dedicate it and don't have a sign.
Yes, yes.
And I don't know how long it takes to get signs, because I remember
Yeah.
the big sign down at the, at the other field, I mean, that was electronic, but sometimes it takes a while to get some of those made, so.
Yeah, these are ongoing conversations, so. Thank you.
Excellent.
No correspondence?
Yeah, no correspondence at this time, future business?
I just didn't have anything because we hadn't set the next date, but now we know that meeting is July twenty-first at five PM, I believe, right?
Perfect. All right, uh, I don't see anything else on here, so can we get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Five zero. Thanks, everybody.